Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Rockingham School Board meeting.
So now let's see.
The comment I have is the section, the section on Deb's presentation was very brief. And not that I want to clutter the minutes, but the, to me, the, what, what, what should be put in there is something to the effect of, all right, we realize that the test scores are not good. And what is it that we're doing to, you know, more of an, more of a dissertation of what it is we're doing about it? And obviously that tied into Kelly and the other lady's presentation. But, you know, we talked, for example, we talked about class time spent on math and English. And so it's not, not anything that's, I didn't have a problem with anything that was written. It's just that it seemed like it should be expanded a bit to address the, so what are we doing about it?
Okay, so how about if we add questions about class time for English and math and, and?
And then the intervention for the higher, I don't know if it's individual.
Instructional leadership teams? Instructional leadership teams?
Well, not that.
With the EST.
But the.
Educational support team.
The, the strategies for dealing with the low scores. Okay, and obviously, you know, Kelly and, for some reason I can remember.
Carrie said her name.
No, it's Shelley, Hilton.
No, no, no.
No, no, they were sitting back.
Right, Shelley wasn't here.
Shelley, yeah.
But I think they, they attempted to give us an introduction of how they're working with students that, that are identified in the classroom as being behind, behind grade or whatever. And it'd be nice to have some of that documented in, in, I can't document it, it would have to be.
It has to be whatever was there, but is this going to be enough? Questions about class time for English and math and the strategies we're using to address these issues?
Yeah, that'd be, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, so we'll add, we'll have that added in and the correction for under budget. Anything else? If not, we'll accept the minutes with those corrections. Okay, new and old business for discussion and action, School Street, Atkinson Street Junction. Mr. Haas?
Yeah, just a, just a real brief update. So had a meeting with Scott Pickup this last week. As you know, we, earlier we had, there was a steering committee and some work around the intersection at Atkinson Street and School Street Junction. And, and that kind of bled a little bit more into the conversation around, I know it's not School Street Junction as it goes up, up the hill though, where the water falls off and talking about our parking lot.
School Street Extension.
Does it go all the way up there? Okay, I might have changed it Church Street. And they're doing some renovation around Church Street. And then 66 Atkins has also come in on, on, they, I think I reported they did some soil sampling. There were some hotspots, they gotta do some cleanup. And, and just, there may be an opportunity for, for Rockingham Board to maybe look at, are there opportunities to expand our school zone? With that, you know, maybe extend the playground or something like that with, with that, where the old Y was kind of thing. Because one of the issues with the traffic patterns is the way school zones are, the, the school itself sits back on, on School Street Extension just far enough that we can't, we can't put up those school zones on Atkinson Street. But if the, if, if that property there were quite a Rockingham school, then it could be. But, so we just got into a conversation, much broader, but they are, it's part of that bigger plan that we're, we're trying to work with them on. And just wanted to make sure we reported back to you that, you know, we're, we're moving forward with that. But look at it all possible options that would be beneficial to our students.
I, I, I sit on, I sit on the trustee board and in this, I get a report on this from the manager. So the, the one area that piqued my interest the other night at the trustee meeting was the, the, the water problem, the, the water that comes off the hill down that road or the, the road that's been shut off.
Yeah.
Okay, is creating some water issues, I believe, at the school. And, and the, the part that I'm not sure if the town is clear on is who caused the water problem? Did putting the school there cause the problem, i.e. the school is at blame? Or the road, is the road or how the road was repaved and, and how it's burned and other types of things that are road related there? Is that the problem? So I think we may get into a little bit of an issue as to who's responsible for what. And I just, I just hope we, I hope this committee that's working on it will.
I think that's.
Resolve that.
And I really appreciate the fact that Scott, the town manager, is wanting to join in joint conversations around it and not just say, we're doing this and the heck with you all and we're not saying we're doing this and the heck with you, that it's a, it's, it's really working together. And I appreciate that because I think it's, it's going to benefit everybody.
The trustees do not control the DPW, that's the town select board. So I'm just saying, we, we get reports on it and because it's obviously a no spot.
But I, I think with that, I don't know the history of it, the chicken and egg, was the school there before the road was there or was the road there? You know, like it, it's kind of what you're saying, but, you know, the, when we were walking, it was DWP and whatnot. You know, the, the question came up of, you know, if you're going to redo it and you put a culvert in, how much would that actually cost to put a culvert in and does that save water from coming into the school? And, you know, if, so we're, we're trying to, you know, we got other projects we're working on, but that's a, that's a summer project for them. So I think we'll.
What about the stockpiling of snow on that location? Are they willing to move the snow? Because that's a huge.
Sure it is. Tell me exactly the area you're talking about.
Right from preschool.
Right at the end of, right?
Like on the road there, like pushing it up the road?
They just make a giant pile of it there and.
Not in the parking lot area, but in the.
On the road.
In the road, right beside the school and it melts down in there. And I understand they, you know, when it snows a lot, it's hard, they have to move it out. But that's not a good place to store.
That's good to know and I can, I can have that conversation. I didn't realize that was.
I doubt I'd be adding to it because it used to be that if it was cleared, then you didn't have the snow cone coming down there and the water coming down into the school. But now because of it sitting there, that's kind of adding to.
The other, the other thing I throw out there, just to give you a sense of sentiment on the trustee board, again, not critical in this discussion, but is the, somebody apparently is talking about parking on that 66 Atkinson Street site, i.e. school parking. That was not a popular topic, that's a question.
Yeah, I, I, I'd heard, I'd heard that as well. I think that's why I appreciate the conversation because it's about what, you've got a community there and what's going to look, what's going to reflect positively on a community? Is a parking lot sitting on that corner, you know, aesthetically pleasing or whatnot? Or, you know, like do we have an opportunity to, you know, have a, you know, a garden? You know, as we originally wanted to have a garden there and stuff like that? Or, or is there some other type of complex? But I, I just appreciate that they're involving us in the conversation, so.
Any other? Bill, any, any comments?
No, thank you, Priscilla.
Okay. I think if we can, personally, I think if we could extend our, our playground some and do something as far as gardening or seating or something rather than parking there, like you said, so that we could get that school zone problem taken care of, that it would be beneficial to the town, to the school situation and all of that. But, you know, that's a whole board decision, not this.
Well, there's a contamination issue too.
There is some.
You know, what Scott indicated is it's not the whole site, it's not like a brown site kind of thing. There's some spots and so those spots would have to get cleaned up. But, yeah, that was, when I first heard that there were some, that it was hot, I, I assumed, you know, like a brown zone, you know, brown site. But he assured me that it was much more isolated to a couple of local or smaller areas within it, so.
Then, if you don't mind me asking, so if it's just that, what happened at Mike Stack and why isn't?
I don't know. I don't know. That was, yeah.
That's a big idea.
So I, I don't know. That's another area I have to pursue, so.
So I keep going into that a little bit and get, maybe get back to us in future meetings. That would be great. Okay, Asser Projects update, we had on there some information on the testing at Central and we had. That we put on last time. That's the projects, that CES kitchen where we're at at that and the entrances at the Rockingham schools.
Yeah, so, I mean, as far as testing, that doesn't have to do with Asser, but that's PCV. So testing did take place two weeks ago.
November 5th and 6th.
Yeah, so the first week there in November, we're still waiting on results. As soon as we know results, it usually takes a minimum of four weeks on most result.
That, that was Central?
Essentially in the middle school. So that same week both buildings were done, so. So when, when we have those results, obviously, we will, you know, what originally happens, just so everyone knows the process, we typically get a letter from Dean, Department of Health and the AOE all at the same time notifying us of the results. They don't get, we don't have to publish them for 10 days, so give us an opportunity to look at them and digest them. And what happened with the high school is those three organizations were on a call with us the very next day to kind of go over the results. When we, when we had one of our other schools tested that came out negative, so Westminster was tested earlier and came out, they didn't detect anything. You know, we didn't ask for a meeting or anything because it was pretty clear. So, so depending on how that, those results come out, then, you know, we will notify the board and then notify the public and look at options of what we have to do. So as far as entrances, my understanding is bids are coming in, we're still waiting on a couple possibly. But as soon as we have those bid numbers, we'll bring them to you as far as the security entrances. So with Saxon's River, that's still slated for a January 1st proposed kind of timeline. But then the roofs at Central, we're still waiting on the results of the PCVs because that'll be a big thing of, if we can move forward. If we can't, depending on that. The kitchen is out to bid and so we're waiting on those bids to come back in. And the, again, the roof here is, it's the waiting on the PCV's results. So the kind of way that Steve has, has been working on this is to, you don't want to dive in and start doing all this work and tearing it up and then you find out you got a big, you stirred a hornet's nest. So, so he's, he's waited on those bids and talked with our construction management team, Hutter. So they're aware of how things are ready to go, so they've kind of got things in the wings. But before we, for one nail in the ground or pull something up, we'll be here looking for, we need to get your approval before we can do that because then we still have to send this up to the state. So we still have to go up to the state for final approval, you know, project approval. So the sooner the better on all of these things. So have a meeting with Steve Horton tomorrow without falling, so I'll have more of an update tomorrow on where we are.
And what about the steps for here at the middle school? I know that's not a necessary project, but.
Again, I haven't talked with Steve, I, I, I mean, I think Steve's been dealing with some personal things and, and so we've, we've been playing phone tag a little bit. But I will bring that up with him tomorrow. Because I think the other piece is, you're looking at bundling all of that. So all of your caulking, masonry work that you had, you know, the, the bits that we saw and stuff like that. And the, it's, he thought it would be far better to do one bid to try and find someone to do all of, all of the one work as opposed to piecemealing it out. But if we get into a situation, I'm just speculating here 100%, if we got into a situation where if they detected PCVs in this building, we had to do some type of thing, that we would then look to, how to, can we fix the steps before? Because they're outside, so we're not, but of course, we're getting into winter, so I know they can lay concrete in wintertime and stuff like that. But, you know, and they can do roofs in wintertime now, so, so we'll, we should be okay, so.
Let's see what's recommended. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from board members? Okay, fiscal year 25 budget.
So did you fill out the copies?
I did not. Thank you.
Just, just will mention, I adjusted it from the first one that you received from the call because Jim Collins was sitting, hey, what are you doing down there? I said, Jim, what do you mean? He said, in the middle school, I had, I had put three of Ralph's strong.
Yeah, Ralph was getting crippled.
Yes, and, and the reason, I think the reason that I did, Nicole must have known that two of the custodians were leaving and she wanted to make sure, but I kept an open position. When somebody leaves, I just put it as an open position. So hence, we overstated the cost. So that was fixed and that brought it down, that was $160,000 per hour. So it did bring it down somewhat. The other thing that I did do, Andy had mentioned about needing, every play area needs to be remulched with cushioning material. That's, it's a safety issue and even if you don't have the money, you have to do that or close the, the play area. So we put into the budgets, the Central and Saxon's River, $4,500 for cushioning material every year. So that's been done as well. The other thing that I want to say, holy cow, you know, you're never done until you're finished. Now, Andy sent me last Friday some papers from Vemers, Vermont Retirement System. And this is for support staff retirement. And we, we now have in the budget 6.75%. But you know what? They're going up next year. And so I recalculated that as well. Not a, not a big deal, except for the SU. And, but, but at least you want to get it right because the custodial staff and any support staff have that included. And it's going up a quarter percent. So it's not a, not a huge factor, but we've integrated that as well. I hope that I didn't miss anything out.
Middle school sports, you got them in?
I, you know what? I went back though. I went back this afternoon and I looked at the 1,500, which are co-curricular activities. Now, there's a drop, a big drop. If you look at the co-curricular from this year to next year, I mean, it's, it's a $20,000 drop. I said, oh, what in the heck did I not forget? But I went back and looked at the detail. The band director, I think, or the band chorus, something is in that. And, and there was somebody else, but there was two. But, but the $2,700 that I have allocated is what we have in the backup as well.
The athletic director is listed as co-curricular.
No athletic director is in 1,400, the athletics.
Okay, because it's listed under the co-curricular salaries, it's a, that's a position in the, in the CBA.
Well, I, I typically have put it as with the 1,400 accounts, all of the athletic costs. So, and what makes it difficult, of course, last year.
It, it still would be at that level, that, that cost level should be, so I haven't looked.
And last year, it was one of those things that there was no money budgeted and so it was hard to track as you're going forward. In the 20, I should say in the 2030 budget. But I think you're, I think you're okay.
Bill, you got a question?
Yes, Priscilla, just generally speaking, per the contract with the teachers, what percentage increase in salaries are we going to have to cover for fiscal year 2025?
We really don't have an answer to that, negotiations are just starting, so we really don't have any.
That's right. Thank you, thank you, that's, that's correct.
Sorry.
No, no, that, that makes sense, my oversight.
Steps are in there, so.
No more questions?
How do you want to do it? Do you want to go school by school or?
I would think we can, we can look at school by school. We probably need to hear recommendations tonight. It's not ready to vote on it tonight or vote on any of those positions, but if the board hears the recommendation and what people are wanting and how they're feeling about it, we can at least be thinking about it till our next budget meeting.
I think if we go school by school, I've got some questions on it, other things, but I think we can go school by school.
I think so too, so let's, yeah, on here first. I have a middle school on here first. On page two is middle school, so. Henry is here to answer questions because Henry was not going to refer to this moving.
The catch is the middle school is on 34 and 35, I'm going to move.
Oh, okay, this is all on page two.
The object, yes. Object summary.
Do you want to go by object? Is that easier?
Whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So page 34?
Page 34. 34, thank you.
So, actually, on page one.
Page one.
Sorry.
Okay.
She has the, that, this is the total Rockingham operational budget, right?
Right.
And so we, we plugged in that, you plugged in that number for the SU assessments, which is up by the.
Yes.
So noting that, the actual building increase, building base increases are actually only about $300,000.
Correct.
But they have, there have been some cuts since the last actual iteration.
Yeah.
Took a look at this and the major thing was fixing the, the round count of 162,000 from the custodians. I had, yeah, I had another question, I'll, I'll dig it out on that, what you've covered too. But anyway, so you're, outside of the SU assessment, your increase is lower than 5%? The SU assessment cracked it up.
That's hitting us hard. Okay, so, did you have any else, Chris?
No, I just wanted to point that, that out.
Okay, so go ahead if you've got questions for Megan.
Megan, the, the, the first question I, I have is the, in, in terms of the support for students, the, what, and I, I'd asked this the last time, Andy, I don't know if you're going to be able to help us here, but how many title positions is the middle school slated to have? How many do they have this year? We use that as a proxy.
So currently the middle school has two and a half positions that are funded and retired.
And are, are all of those interventionalist type positions?
Academic interventionalists, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so this, the middle school has two and a half right now.
Correct, that's what we are projecting that we would be able to honor next year.
Okay. So my first question is on the parrot's, there was, there was a drop there, but the, our budget is, is 200, is.
It's, it's an increase, it's going 25,000 this year to 140,000 next year.
It's a, it's a $114,000 increase, the salary line.
Right.
So what, what does that represent?
That represents step and a new salary base that was negotiated.
No, but we only had one, we, we budgeted 25 last year, so we had one, we had one parrot. So the question now is if we're up to 140,000, we must have several more.
One 504 from, coming from Saxon's River. Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay.
So that's an increase of one?
Yes.
Well, it can't go from 25 to 100, 140.
Right.
With one new parrot. So there's, there's a lot more happening. 140, you know, if you use 25 as a proxy, you'd be talking five parrots, roughly, you know.
The actual for 2023 was 44, you still wouldn't go to 140.
So I know that Henry was originally looking at potentially reducing a couple of staff in that area. So I do know that that was part of his plan. Was to, some of, some of the positions are, he thinks that, you know, we, we increased a para last year when we didn't have an eighth grade math teacher, when we had the online math teacher, so we had to put someone in there. So, so that was a position he was originally looking at reducing down. And then there were the potential some others, there is the para who's in the E-class. In E class. So. I guess I got that. Um it's the one thing we don't have in here is that like list of all the different. Like cuz I can run through that. I bring that with me, so I could run, yeah, that, so.
Okay, so that's.
Um.
It's a middle school parent.
Yeah, so I I know that he would uh definitely uh discuss with me a reduction of. At least two of those para position. Uh because the. The ask is is to maintain the dean of students. He feels that it is uh uh and maybe complete that also. Um but uh. It had a huge impact tremendously on the um behavior in the school, but also just on um the overall culture. Um and so he was looking to do an offset with some of that. Um. So.
So they're still in the budget right now, but they could go out.
Yes.
Well, some came out. If you look, if you looked at the. The draft that we got before.
Oh.
Uh. It was uh it was up more than a hundred and fourteen thousand. Now it's up a hundred and fourteen thousand. Uh so some action has been taken, but the question is still the question is. I I wanna know what the I we know we picked up a five oh four para. From uh a child that's at Saxons River.
Potentially, potentially.
Potentially, potentially. But we need to know what the pairs are and what they're doing, okay? Because if we if we added a para boy for math, that type of issue. You know, we're he's he's up, you're up over eight percent.
Okay.
Uh on last year's budget, the middle school, okay? And the uh, you know, my feeling is that we haven't got to the other two schools yet. The uh we have to. Uh we have to decide about these new positions, okay?
I understand. I I I guess what I'm saying is I think there's still an error in there. So I don't think that there's.
Okay, so the purpose of our meeting tonight was to go through these things. Okay, so unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to get get to that on the para.
Yeah, we're not gonna be able to get to all of that, but at least we can get the questions out there, so we'll so that we'll. Be prepared for next time. There's definitely a question on the para salaries um for the middle school.
And of course, embedded in the benefits of the.
That's all the benefits and all the other stuff that's increasing as well. If we have them in there, yes.
Right, the uh.
So currently, the para is employed servicing a student at Saxons River?
There's currently a student at Saxons River who's in fourth grade.
Right, so has that para gone out of Saxons River's budget?
Yeah, it could have gone out of Saxons River's budget, yeah. But it's 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 not known until. You know, I mean, that team has to meet and make a decision if that's an appropriate um need.
Whether they need that need.
To me, that would be one that that I put in the budget, because there'd be the assumption.
Right, but no matter what.
But if the student doesn't need it next year because. So we we would have.
The student will be out of Saxons River next year.
That's what I'm.
Right now, there's five pairs listed in that budget, so that's something that we just need answers on.
Yeah.
And and I will say, and it's just me saying, I could support pairs in kindergarten classes cuz. Man, there's some tough kiddos, you know, and that's a tough age, but that's. And five oh four and kindergarten, I could support those. It's general pairs.
Yeah.
Well, we're poking up the we've talked actually preschool program this year. And uh so we'll anyway, let's look.
Well, it doesn't, I mean.
Yeah.
It's still our needs, you know, they're they're.
Right.
Yeah.
Um but if if.
Kindergarten.
Part of the reason was that we had it for the maths because of the um having to do the online last year. So if they're saying that may come out, maybe there's some others that can come out as well, and that's for them to look at and give us a clear answer.
The master funded this current year, and again. Um the conversation I had with Henry uh was that we were looking to not bring all those on, so I don't. Again, I don't know. Between the time I talked to him now, I I don't know if things change, so I mean.
Yeah, well, if it's S R, then it's not a, you know, a cut to the budget. It's just something that isn't being added in, so.
Right.
Right, the other the other areas, we have contracted services at the middle school of a. Hundred and thirty one thousand five hundred. Some is just miscellaneous type things, but. The biggie is a hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars.
Um I'm thinking that maybe Jigs, if you look at line fifty three on page thirty four. That maybe that has been decreased way down.
Well, line fifty three is facilities.
As contracts.
That's part of the one thirty one.
Okay, that's not the con- okay, the contract series is up further. You're right. Sign thirty. I I miss miss read it, sorry.
The one thirty one. Five fifty is a a combination of of several things. Um. But the biggie is a hundred and hundred and three thousand. Where do we have that?
Page eight.
Page eight. You look.
Line two thirty seven.
Yeah, the uh. It says contracted services, general ed. Education. One hundred and three thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
Megan, you know, that might be?
No, that's what I was just looking.
So I I I uh we'll get that answer. I don't know what that is, so.
Okay, general ed. It's a hundred and three.
It's in the budget this year.
This year, yes.
So we're.
That doesn't necessarily mean it. Should be or could be or.
Right.
The other thing that the other thing that's happened this year is we've moved. Uh some of the intervents, not the intervents, well, some of the clinicians into the S U budget.
Right.
So I want to be sure that we're not double counting.
Psycho- psychological services, yes.
So, all right, we got that one.
I think those show up as decreases, so I remember seeing.
Zero down.
Yeah, but. But I guess getting confirmation that that actually that contracted service should be here or whether it was in the.
Yeah, but a hundred and three thousand dollars, that's a. Even if there was a clinician, that's a lot more than a clinician cost.
Well, it says a hundred and thirty twenty thousand five.
I'm looking on page eight, a hundred and three.
Yeah, if you see that that one, you can see the other little ones, you know, there's uh. Uh. Contracted Service Student Assistance Program, S A P, that's twenty six thousand.
Yeah.
So it's it's okay, um.
I think you're required to enlist assistance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm done with student assistance program.
Under the under the guidance, uh there was a contracted service too. I don't, if the twenty thousand dollars, I don't see it here. Oh, anyway, so that the big one is the one oh three.
Yeah, two forty two is the guidance, and it looks like it's uh five oh four.
Five oh four.
Yeah.
Okay. Guide, so that that twenty thousand is for five oh four.
Uh Jim, this says twenty five hundred.
Oh, twenty five hundred. Yeah.
Or two thousand fifty.
What what number seven, where's that?
That is our line. Line uh.
Two forty two.
Two forty two. Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, this is twenty five hundred.
All right, well, that's Central Elementary, the twenty five hundred. And um. And the um. Like, I believe that those three lines. So the the. The five oh four services at Central, the health services at the middle school, at two thousand fifty, I gotta double check on what that is. Uh but then the auto the audio meter um that uh potentially um. Doesn't need to exist as well. Um that was for a specific student.
I would just focus on the one oh three.
Yeah, no, I I don't disagree, but I, you know, there's.
Now, the the uh the the other the other things I'm gonna, a couple of things I'm gonna mention. For your benefit is that the, in my opinion. Uh the middle school budget is still too high. Okay? And uh the two things that jump out at me is one is the uh. Um. Uh the uh. What do you call it? The student, not the assistant principal, but the.
The dean of students.
Dean of students, the D O S, the dean of student. Uh that's a, you know, a ninety five point seven, ninety seven, ninety five thousand seven hundred salary. Plus, I'm sure there's there's benefits. It's a big item. Uh the other item that I would. Uh I'd like to raise is kind of a. Something I'd like to hear back from the administration on is uh the music program. Uh we have a full-time band director and a full-time vocal musician. Okay? The salary account for those two positions are a hundred and eighty six thousand.
Megan, in the um class enrollment thing, I saw this, the. Um Stan was teaching both during both the chorus and the band.
So he's dual enrolled right now because he helps out um the way our schedule works. Ellen can't be at the beginning of like the first ten minutes of one of the classes, so he covers it, so he has to be able to attend, which is why he's. Listed on her class, like that's why he's in power school that way. So he doesn't actually teach chorus, he just needed to be on her roster.
So and so she has she has. The six, she's listed with six classes that have numbers in them.
Mm-hmm.
What classes is the other classes that she's listed with are classes, and then chorus is a different thing?
Uh chorus is. So chorus is one of those.
Chorus is one of those.
So see, if you're counting a class of like the social class or advisory, those aren't like.
I didn't put advisor.
Why is why? I mean, it's six choral classes?
Yeah, there's six, six that were listed as music.
Okay, I. I I'm just saying, like, I I mean, that sometimes gets.
I can double check that.
Right, cuz they you have to roster them and stuff like that, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't counting those classes.
Yeah, um I have uh chorus is chorus is actually the twenty nine. Yeah. But it's.
No, it's.
Not on there. I didn't put chorus on there cuz I skipped the first one at the top, which I counted as advisory. So chorus is is twenty nine, that would be before those other six. The twenty nine is chorus, that's not on there. I apologize. Music five is fourteen, music six is twenty, music eight is eight, music eight ten, music seven thirteen, and music seven twelve. Yeah, I left off the chorus. I apologize. You'd have to add that in front of her numbers. Um at the beginning, which would be chorus. Yeah.
I'm sorry, so I don't have what you're referring to, so. Are you just referring to class sizes?
That was the list that they gave me last time, and I took. I I missed the fact that said chorus cuz I took off advisory at the top, and most of them had advisory at the top, and I. And looking at it, saw it as advisory instead of chorus. So if you'll add on your list, people, um twenty nine in front of the fourteen. For.
Are the three.
Seven classes.
I have a class list in front of me.
Are the three um. Classes Stan has, right? Are they naturally three classes or is one of them?
No, that twenty nine is the chorus.
So that's not, he's just starting, it's not one of them. And then is Stan still in the rest of his schedule doing individual and group lessons?
He is, and we've discussed next year to um dividing music a little differently, just because Ellen does have. Chores and then all six, so having Stan look at some of those options in terms of taking some of that on, just for equity.
Well, I think it's more than just equity. I think you gotta you gotta look at your program. And obviously, the the uh the name of the game is focusing resources in the classroom. I mean, that's the key thing. We're we're failing miserably in terms of our test scores.
Yes.
And so I'm looking at areas that have big dollar amounts. That would get you uh in line with the budget direction. And uh, you know, I think uh I think we, those of us that have been around a long time, we see what's happened to. The bands, both at the high school and the middle school, and it's almost like. It's almost like it would be it would be a great idea if we could have a band director that that. Did both the high school and the middle school. And then had a. Choral director that did both the high school and the middle school. And, you know, it it would be uh less of a everybody has to go to the class. But more of a people that. That wanna do it type of thing or that are attracted to those areas. It's a way of providing support. But with a better uh budget picture. Uh and and also re- representative of the uh of the demographics.
One thing that happened is with the COVID, you weren't allowed to sing out, and you weren't allowed to blow an instrument. And so it cut all of the feed coming in for those classes, so right now there's kind of building up. I actually, when I looked at it and saw Stan had eighteen advanced in advanced band and twenty in beginning band. I I thought, wow, that's a lot better than what we had last year. And hopefully, you know, as we build up and do that more, we will end up with the band sizes that we used to have.
Well, I'm just, I again, I'm looking for ways to.
I hear you. A chorus teacher at the high school actually teaches in two schools. Is my understanding. Don't they teach in Grafton? Are they split?
They might be going out there. I don't.
I think that one goes out there.
You know, Jigs, I have I seen that type of a a model, yeah. Um it typically works when it's all on one facility.
Yeah.
You know, travel is, you know, a a big impact on trying to get, you know, aligning schedules and whatnot. I mean, that that's probably the biggest hurdle. That's a logistical issue, but um.
You know, like I say, it's just it's just something to throw out there to to try to get. Uh the uh uh the budget more in line with what uh. Uh see, the the other, I I don't know if everybody realizes this, but the. The special ed budget at the high at the S U is up significantly. We're gonna have to pass on. Uh the revenues are down. Uh the state law has changed, the funding formula has changed. We've got fewer students. So that's impacted the state aid, so the revenue line is getting hit. Uh our revenue line is getting hit because of new tuition from uh. Our three uh towns that that utilize the middle school. And so uh. The focus of, you know, a a five percent increase in the budget means a five percent increase in taxes. That's it's disproportionate. It's and and so that's what we're we we have to we have to face the taxpayer.
Well, no, it's not a direct.
Not direct.
No, Jim, a a five percent increase in the budget.
Would.
It it may be more than a percent increase to tax, or it may be less, but it's not a direct.
Not a direct, absolutely not, no.
And this is a different year because of. Uh Act one twenty seven. Which was passed, and we actually are, we may get a break. From that. Uh because our equalized pupil count may. Be larger. This year, even though uh they're the same.
Well, I I looked at Rockingham, and I cuz I was trying to do some comparables. I'm still uncertain.
Yeah.
And I would never give an answer, but it looked to me like it was up substantially with a new um weighted.
Waiting.
And see, the 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 one area that I don't know, what's the year we're gonna come in? Now, last year was fifteen four oh one, something like that. I don't know where it's gonna be this year.
Well, it was a. Well, it was the.
December first.
Will go.
December first.
Down.
Down.
Yes.
But it's not, it's not gonna be apples to apples because the the multiplier, they're changing the multiplier, so. And the other thing you should beware of, Jim, is there's a. A five percent, basically a cap in effect.
That's all.
It's a crazy world. From the state, we're taxed, so. Uh a lot of, a lot of things are shifting, uh and it's kind, it's interesting.
The A D M that we saw on that sheet that you passed out last time, we were down, I think thirty or or more. On the A D Ms.
Well, remember, A D M is a two-year rolling.
Right.
And and but the waiting, those are weighted students, eh and the waiting is changing.
Okay.
So poverty kiddos are counting for more, you know, and we have a lot of them.
We have, oh yeah, we do, and that hasn't been back yet.
No.
No.
No, we're 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 just still unpacking that whole thing, so. So I think I think with the middle school, and I and I I hear what you're saying and 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 the the thoughts you have. I think there's some still adjustments that need to be made in a couple of big areas that like. I don't have the answers on those contracted services, like that, that seems heavy to me. And I just don't know what that's for, um and so um. And then like the paras, like I said, that was a conversation, um this doesn't reflect a conversation that we had, so. Um I think there's some areas we need to go back and and look at and potentially um there's some um future reductions, which. Um could be something that we could definitely look at. The the other one with the um the band and the chorus, I think it's something we could definitely go back and look at and and look at the scheduling. Cause I think that's gonna be a big piece of it is, you know, um where are the needs for students and 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 what are their, what are their needs, so.
Well, and we may have, we may be able to do something with the S U budget. Their meeting coming up, that we, you know, we may be able to turn a little bit here.
Yeah, it's a compare.
But as you say, Jim, a lot of this uh stuff, you can't do anything about, the bus lease. The.
Special ed.
The special ed uh tuition costs um and the insurance increase. There are a lot of figures that aren't going anywhere, so what we can actually do is kind of.
So. When we're looking at this, you're going to look at Paris and that kind of thing, but the only. Position that is wanting to be brought in is that the only one is the dean of students.
I believe so.
So we'll have to look at that. Yeah.
The ninety five seven oh eight.
Yeah.
Well, that's the total.
Yeah, that's the total, including all of them.
Yep, including that, that's all the.
That's not just salary?
No.
Okay, okay.
Who does the uh, who does the schedule for the middle school?
Uh primarily Henry, but as I've jumped on board, I'm gonna be doing that with him.
All right, so in at the middle school, guidance is not involved in the academic schedule.
It it is, however, some of the suggestions from New Solution, we just got with them last week. Is that scheduling needs to be much more collaborative and not just be, you know, a person in a room, uh which um. I I agree one hundred percent with them because there are nuances of schedules that need to be involved and whatnot, so. Um we're looking at going into this. For next year, as we start to schedule a much more collaborative model, that's what they're recommending, and so. Um we're gonna be meeting right after, um sometime right after Thanksgiving. With the larger group and sharing it out with the the larger groups um of folks on their recommendations, and I think they have a meeting. With with the middle school specifically about their recommendation.
And we have a scheduling committee that needs as well. That has been here.
And and in looking at the um. Class sizes that we have uh approved through our um policies and stuff, it. This really is not too far off as far as numbers either. There's an occasional one here or there.
Well, no, you're 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 still in that weird spot, like, you know, like where. You almost got a few too many kind of things, you know, if 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 enrollment were to dip, you know, um. In the next couple of years, it might be something we need to really look at because you you're at a tipping point where you still. You need, you know, like half a teacher, but you can't, you know, like literally half a teacher all day long. So it's not, you know, you can't find that kind of thing, so um that's for that tipping.
Well, one of the areas that that I was, you know, in the, I believe, for the for the five, six group, we have six teachers, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Six teachers. And the, you know, looking down the list, the. The uh, well, like the the, I don't think you're worried, see the. If you, if you look at uh English, math, science, and social studies, these are what those six teachers teach. Okay? And the, you know, it's sort of like, if 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 three of the six. Are really. And I know, I know this is not a, this is a elementary uh license. But if three of the six are their specialty in social studies, I'm just, I'm just saying, okay? Then clearly. We need more emphasis on math and English.
And I believe Mr. Bailey has already seen that and is already starting to adjust that for next year.
So that, that really is, that's part of what what I'm getting at in terms of the time we spend and the concentration of the teachers, you know. If the, it's it's so critical that we emphasize those areas. I don't wanna de-emphasize science or social studies, but I think that the, you know, the 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 horses have to be. Put.
Yeah, I I think in a in a um. When we met even prior to this meeting last week with New Solution, Mr. Bailey had already. Uh begun seeing that and looking at how he can make adjustments and and recommendations, so he um. He definitely sees that there 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 could be uh. At an advantage to moving um. You know, to a little heavier in mathematics and and E L A at the fifth and sixth grade level, so.
Now, in the seventh and eighth, there is four and four and they're, they're aligned with that. We could, we could never get.
Yeah, in a perfect world, you have that in all.
Yeah, that setup, yeah.
Megan, also, in the library's study skills, you have two people, or I believe, that are in that classroom, is that correct?
No, so the same thing as with band and chorus, so uh Jessica Ellingsworth is scheduled into those classes for attendance purposes. Uh but that library time is where interventions are happening for fifth and sixth grade, so she's a five, six interventionist. So she's pulling students from library and needs to be able to mark their attendance, that's why she's on that roster.
She's an interventionist.
And then um Sarah Lair is our librarian.
Okay, all right. Just, we had noted that they were the same numbers and so we're wondering on that, okay? Any other questions for the middle school? Thank you. Uh central school theory, yes.
Would you wish this theory?
What page is that on?
Thirty, page thirty.
Thank you. Is this any through and you know?
No, this doesn't reflect what you mentioned.
With a mask on, you're going to have to.
I know, I'm so sorry. Really loud, I had no voice today either, sorry. Um so we had looked at potentially adding in uh the Zen Zen, the Restoration Room, you know, person. Um from who was an Esser, is no longer an Esser. Um the health para was a discussion, and then the Jenna para. Questioning a behavior, you know, academic interventionists. There were a couple line items that were hoping to shift around what was coming out of it. Um so there was a difference of a thousand dollars um. From moving two line items to make sure that they were covered for the new positions, and the only other one would be the academic interventionist.
I'm sorry, I can't. Can't follow you. I'm having trouble hearing you for one thing.
I'm so sorry, and I can't.
So let me, let me try and hit on this, you hear correctly from Rob, so.
Okay.
Um so there's a hundred, almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in contracted services.
Right.
And so um the feeling is those. That money will not be needed for contracted services necessarily, but to use some of those dollars um for the um. You know, social emotional uh interventionist, um which is currently being funded out of um E F C R. And the the data is showing that that is having an impact on students and and um. Keeping students in the class and and their behavior. The other um piece is using some of those funds um to uh potentially fund a uh a paraprofessional. Um that would, that would, it's currently was under those contracted services through an H C R S, but using a paraprofessional to support students. Especially like in the kindergarten area, split a para between the two classrooms, so that um you would have support uh for those kids. Um the the other, the twenty seven nine thirty five that you see there on page thirty. Number four or line four, that's currently the health assistant that um is there with the the medical needs that students have. Um they're pretty high at Central uh currently, um and so maintaining and supporting that, so. So that's the 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 big movement, it's, it's not really adding a lot of money, it's just, it's just moving some um lines around for. Um in the future, and then there's um there would be potential savings because some of that hundred and seventy eight. Is also the clinicians that we moved to the S U.
Right.
Right, so those will, those will be assessed back as part of that increase already, so they got a decrease here because. Uh you don't wanna pay for them twice, I don't think.
The thing, the the thing, Andy, I would say is that the. We have a hundred and thirty students there. And we have a full-time nurse. And to have a para in addition to the full-time nurse, just.
I have data to speak to that if it helps.
Blows me away.
I know, I understand that, I under, you know, it's.
It's just, I mean.
Atypical, we have a lot of medically fragile students. So right now, from August to November, Nurse Genesee, a thousand and sixty-four skilled treatments. Um that's not a band-aid, that's not anything else, this is for, we have a student with leukemia, we have a student who's getting subcutaneous injections, intramuscular injections. This is for finger sticks, this is for um glucose monitoring, we have three, and you know, a diabetics. Um we have a student with brain tumor, so there's a lot of outside of just a band-aid, this is, none of that is even calculated in that, so. Just in that, you know, first three months, we're at a thousand and sixty-four skilled nursing train visits. And so because of that, the good news is we're also doing, with Wednesday, we're getting the students outside, but the nurse can't be in both places at the same time. And so with these medically fragile students who we wanna support, we wanna be able to have them still participate in the field trips, those first state and winter sports, things like that. Um and that doesn't even include the daily med, um you know, um just distribution for our students, so. We have hundreds and hundreds of visits each month that are not even band-aids and things like that too, so. Um I have data that I can share around, some of these, I I redacted names of things, but. Um this is specifically, and I can share this around just to see to the numbers, so this is just numbers. I'll have that down. Almost a hundred and thirty, there's a lot of skilled medical needs right now, so.
Okay, so correct me if I'm I'm wrong, I'm hearing that you wanna add the health assistant that was currently Esser.
They're in there.
They are already covered.
I know it's, I know it's in here, but that's what what you wanna add.
What we're adding would be the kindergarten para.
Uh the health assistant was in our budget last year?
Yes.
No, 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 it wasn't in last year.
No, it says zero.
So that's what she's saying, I think, Priscilla, is. Okay, that's in the budget, but the other para is not.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
They might.
So you are in, you've already added in here the help assist assistant that was from Esser.
Yes.
Okay, and what you want to add to make this even more.
Mm-hmm.
Is another social, emotional interventionist.
Yes, but.
Pardon?
Yes, but.
But.
It's not an ad.
It's it's not an ad because it's a shift because the contracted services line.
But we we gotta see that.
Is it, is it the contract, is she under contracted services?
No, private, no, private, so.
Okay.
So this current budget just reflects what's currently budgeted and what we had, um what we came in. We haven't shifted the numbers around yet, but the shift would be because you. You asked it to come in with what do we want and how we would explain moving it, and so. The social emotional teacher would go under the teacher line, so you'd see a larger increase in that teacher line, but in line thirty, you would see a decrease.
The social emotional, is that a para or is that a teacher?
Uh it's a teacher.
Interventional.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and but that ends, so those are two positions that are currently funded under Esser.
Correct.
No.
Well.
Don't, don't worry about it.
Well, I wanna know, I wanna know where the people are coming from.
So so I I I honestly think that when it got budgeted, the health assistant got budgeted under that contract services line, or what was that? That's one reason why you have a hundred and seventy-eight thousand there, so it's just, so I think it's a double hit on there. I think also uh we've shifted the uh school-based clinicians out of there, so you would see that reduction of, I think it's about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for that person. And then um you would also, if you uh carried the social emotional uh interventionist. Um and the paraprofessional, you would still see a drop in the total uh increase of twenty-three thousand. You'd probably be down closer to almost a flat budget.
Correct. With that, even with that being assessed back to us.
And I would say.
I'm I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm just looking at your, not your assessed budget, but you're just your a flat budget here of.
Because we don't have the assessment included in here.
Correct, so I'm I'm just talking about the the cost for that school.
Okay.
Would be a flat budget.
So let's just revise the budget and see what it looks like.
Right.
You know, take out what was supposed to come out and put in what what the request is, and I think that's the best way to to proceed at this point. But what what is the slate for title support at at the central?
Two and a half, two and two.
Two, two at central. Okay, so. From this year's question, so we're moving the contracted, you wanna move the contracted health assistant to our regular. A regular line, and you want to add the social emotional interventionist teacher and one para. Is what you're telling us?
Yes, this is.
I just wanna clarify my question. What what you want.
And again, I think that the kindergarten para, we are seeing uh a lot of students in preschool right now. Uh with quite a bit of um need, uh more need than we probably have seen in. In in my years with you all, um and it's um. You know, I I think our preschool folks are doing a tremendous job providing for those students, but they're need, you know, they. They need, and and so especially that, you know. This in the fall is when you're gonna, you know, that's, that's what you, you establish all your routines and everything in the fall. So you can get your bigger bangs in the spring, especially with younger kids, and so. If you're spending, you know, if we lose that traction in the fall with them, it it just means the whole year, there there. There's potential to fall behind because you're not being able to catch up, because. Um our real ask is to, is to look at that position as a support. In Westminster, we have that type of support and and we see, we see the gains. Uh in Westminster, and so that's why we're trying to look at it across the S U.
My guess would be whether, if the student needs that much support. Um and there are even several of them, that would they be under special ed and be a special ed? Would they be under special ed and be a special ed para?
You're, again, you're getting, so I, I think. That type of thinking is what's gotten us into this trouble all these years. We don't get reimbursed for kid, paras anymore, so you don't get reimbursed for these students. So you're gonna pay for the support for these students, whether it's through the assessment of special education. Because it's a block grant now. But what we want to do is not have students um be identified for special education just to get paras support. I mean, many students don't need special ed, special direct instruction, they just need support. And, um, and they don't need continuous support from kindergarten through twelfth grade, they, they needed. If you build up that support at the beginning and then wean that support away, that's what you're looking at. There are paraprofessionals currently in the kindergarten that are supporting one-to-one students. Um, in, in one of the classrooms, so I. You know, we, we were talking about this earlier today, and I think, I, it's, it's interesting because the. I, I don't. When I became director, I didn't ever see the billbacks happening, and, and I was carrying all of the special educated, all the paras. And I never saw the money come back in as a revenue line for what. Central was paying for. Because they were supposedly paying for part of all these paras, and so we were, we were covering the full cost of all those paras. During the classroom, so, you know, we've had substantial reduction in paraprofessionals in our SU. Um, we're down about thirty paras in, in six years. Um, and our goal is to not increase. Um, it's to try and maintain, um. And not have uh regular paras or classroom paras at all grade levels, it's just looking at the kindergarten level to support kids. And we're trying to build up the toolbox of teachers so that they can support all kids. We're not making referrals, especially because not all kids need that special, specialized.
The issues are behavioral.
Many of them are behavioral, and.
I think that's a very interesting point, though, the block grant kind of changed that, you know. It used to be specialized, it's like, okay, at least. Fifty percent of the money will come back, you know, it's, it's, it's a cost, but it's only fifty percent of the cost, you know. Money, and now it's, no. That's it. So it's kind of a different way of kind of thinking about.
Well, yeah.
How you solve those problems, as, as, I think you very well apply.
And I think it's what Jayce kind of talked about earlier, it's like, you know, our student population. Our overall student population is going down, we're, we're not seeing huge increases, our specialized. Population is creeping up again. The, the amount of dollars we're getting is based on our overall population. Not on our specialized population, so increases in special education population, the cost will get transferred then to the local budget. And so, um, it's, it's the, the reason we're trying to build a system, you know, a system can't be built unfortunately in a year, and it takes. It's going to take years to get teachers to where they feel they've got the tools to, to really be able to address them, and we. We've invested quite a bit in um responsive classroom, which is a tier-one universal. Everyone gets it bite of the apple, but it's a massive vote to fix kids, and then there's. Um, what kids need on an individual level and, and how teachers are, are. Are, are handling those situations, kids that are going to a Zen Den or, or, or reboot room or something like that. Those are kids who are, you know, are, are being dysregulated, we're hoping to get them regulated and back in the classroom. So that they're not spending tremendous amounts of time out of classroom, because the more time kids are spending out of class, it's less learning. And so that's the whole point, is to keep kids in the classroom and learning, so.
Are we doing anything to assess readiness for our kindergarten and that kind of thing? And making sure, because sometimes a child just benefits from us an extra time. And then would they benefit from an extra year with the preschool type program, which would give them a boost up? I've seen kids that, that did that kind of thing, and then it ended up top of their class. Um, just because they were given that extra time and that extra amount of, you know. The level to be able to learn those behavioral skills and that, so that they were ready to learn.
Yeah, could be, I mean, there have been kids that we've, we've. Had them doing that another year of preschool, it's, you know, you try to keep kids with their cohorts. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's real individualized, if a kid's.
I mean, kindergarten is more like the year you. Talk about retention.
Well, it's the only, it's the only time you really can do it.
Right. I mean, retention really has a very poor record of success, that's, the fact is.
I know some of them that have done that and ended up top of their class, I know.
Well, you know what, Priscilla, a lot of research just counters what.
And I hear you, but so.
You're not hearing it right, then.
Yeah, no, I, I.
It's really been proven to be ineffective. And what kids need is not a repeat of the same thing, they need additional assistance.
Sometimes it can help. Anyway, um, let's go on to, um, yeah, were you finished, Carrie? Or did you have more, or do you have more questions for Carrie?
Oh, we're still looking at academic interventionists, it's still an issue, so we're. I, but I understand, like, we're women in a bunch, so we're trying to round Peter P. Pauls, because I think everybody is right now, so.
Okay, I don't think we're gonna, I think we need to look at our budget, we're listening for, you know, what you want. Jerk tonight, and then we're looking at. You know, is there anything else that you need to comment on and?
No, I, I think the other thing, and, and um. We, we are, um. I, I think there might be dollars in title that we, we may be able to slide another interventionist into Central. I mean, that's something we are looking at, um, so it's, it, it's. You know, we're, we're, we're looking at all the dollars and where the needs are, and I mean, there's, there's definitely a heavy need at Central, and that's, that's an area we know. Um, so it's, um. You know, I, I think. We're still playing with the numbers a little bit, so we can come back and, and look at that, so I think that's why. I'm not coming in with a big push for an academic interventionist, because I know where that, that piece is, where that, that, that lie is, so.
So when I got down here, I got that, you want to add a social emotional interventions and a para, one para support. And you want the health assistant moved from the contractual to, to the regular.
Correct.
That's what I've put down as far as what the difference is between this year.
Yes, it shouldn't be a huge shift, hopefully we can just move some line items. And then, um, it should be similar. If, you know, where right now I have a difference of a thousand dollars up. Um, so it's not astronomical.
And, and just for your information, the. One of the paras, I think it's the medical one, is already in this draft.
She's listed in this draft, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from any of the board members? Okay, Laura, I think you are up, and that's on what page?
Um, we'll just look at thirty-two, there we make a little snapshot. Um, so just the, uh, Jim already spoke about the, if I'm looking at the uh supply line, line thirty-nine. That's the wood chips, so that's the estimated amount there. Um, and then line thirty, just for some explanations here, uh, contracted services, that's up. Um, Shelley Wilson, who you have met before, um, I had money in there for five oh four evaluations and FBAs. And she's recommended that we increase that, given the number of five oh fours we currently have. So the fifty-five hundred, um. Uh, increase equates to, uh, two five oh four evaluations and two FBAs. So that's just putting uh money aside, um, for those to happen. And then, um. If you go up to uh line eight. That's taking out our school-based clinician, so that's the minus twenty-three nine zero two. But it would be so far. Okay, and then, um, if you go to line four. That's uh shifting the para from us to the uh middle school, so that's that minus twenty-nine seven oh seven.
Right.
That's deletion two?
It does, yep.
They're both for five oh four.
Two pairs. They are currently five oh four, and um, I, you know, as you know, five oh four can shift, right? Um, and our goal is to work ourselves out of five oh four paras, um, always. And, um, you know, I'm thinking about kindergarten support as well, so just, you know, thinking about all of that. So right now they're five oh four paras, not adding any other paras to that line. Thank you. And then, um, the big one is this. Um, we don't have any wiggle room in our budget, like Central did, to cover physicians. Um, we are pretty bare bones, and, um, so my ask is, um. We currently have three uh interventionists. Um.
One is a title.
One is a title. My ask is to add one locally funded interventionist, so we would have a total of two.
I can support that.
Can I say and?
No.
So I'll just say and. Um, to add an RP SEL uh behavior support uh person. So that's the two asks, we're the only school in the SU that doesn't currently have one.
What are the initial support?
Uh, restorative practice, social emotional learning.
So that's, that's a teacher.
Yeah, it's the same as, um, Carrie calls the, the Zen Den, which you guys call.
So it's a teacher, not a para.
So you're talking about, I mean, two teachers would be.
And if I had to choose one, it would be the interventionist, the academic interventionist, that's. Um, but the ask is for two. And we do not have, um, as I said earlier, we don't have any uh money that we can shift.
Where are we on? Getting. Current staff all trained in all the schools, and this is probably for Andy. And all, in all the schools, so that they can take over the restorative practices, because. I think that was basically what the idea was from in the beginning, now I don't know.
So, so that's still the plan, but I think, I think we've really tried to change the, the. The, the message around that, they're not restorative practice rooms. Restorative practice isn't a place you go.
Right.
Restorative practice, so, so, so restorative practice is not a place you go if you're dysregulated. Restorative practices is to repair harm that happens in a classroom or between two students, and so it's. It's working through those things, that's part of the. The tools to train teachers so that they can address and deal with situations that might occur in their classroom to. You know, two students are, are having an argument, how do you address that, and how do you deal with that, and, and, and how do you work through that? As opposed to where a student might have been sent out type of thing. So it's repairing that harm in the community. We're referring to these interventionists, why I, I use that distinct language of not calling it Zen Den or whatever, but a social emotional interventionist. That's the, that's the, a total different thing, it's where a person that is student who is dysregulated, who they. The teacher has tried different things, where a student can go, get regulated, not for a long period of time, and get back into the classroom. So that they can get back to learning, so it's, it's totally different, it's not. Um, uh, it, it, restorative practices is a very different, um. Philosophy and, 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 and whole implementation, so. Uh, we're still working on that, um, you know, and, and that's a lot of the work Carrie Newton does uh for us and. In doing it, um, you know, as, as we know, after she was pulled, we will hold different assignment, um, and so. Uh, we're continuing to build up those practices, um, it's part of our responsive classroom and restorative practices. And, and those two base lines to get everybody up to speed.
Um, the job description, are you requiring teacher license? For the.
We, um, it necessarily, uh, we're looking at, um. We're looking for someone who's got that, like, social background, like a, you know, a social worker, you know, type of thing up to a teacher and. Um, the, the reason of not, um. Limiting it just to a paraprofessional is because that person may not have all the tools that we're looking for. We're looking for someone who, not that we're going to bring in and train, we're looking for people who already have these tools.
I agree with that. But I would. Really urge you to hold on before you start requiring a teacher license.
So, so we're not requiring a teacher's license, no. So that's, um, you know, um, but we have some good people that are in positions that. You know, we prefer to have someone who adds up, there is no license for a social emotional interventionist, so.
It's only matters on enforcement, like the bargaining agreement.
So, we are not requiring it, so.
Good, thanks.
Well, I think, I think we should, uh. Do another round of things, I think the, uh. Um, obviously the, the middle school. It's got some work to do. Um, I would recommend that we change the Saxon River budget to show the interventionalists, but hold off on the. Uh, behavioral support one for now. And, uh. I would, uh. For Saxon River, I would not do anything with this academic interventionalist, I would see what the other changes look like.
Wait a minute, did you just say to put it in and then say not to put it in?
No, for Saxon River.
Sorry, I just misunderstood.
For Saxon River, we're talking about a, a social emotional person. A para. And, uh. And keeping the para for the nurses not to send them. That's central, I'm sorry. And then for Saxon's River. Uh, we're gonna keep the two paras in there. That are technically five oh four, and add an interventionalist. And then, like I said, the middle school will have to see what. What you guys come up with.
We will get the, the contracted services are simply a move, right? Andy, go to the SU budget, so we're going to be assess those same charges back.
Yeah, they're, they're not a saving.
Why not save?
Which one are we talking about?
The contracted services.
Or which school? No, that's, that's not true.
So, would you?
So, so I, I, I believe, so, in, in Central. I, those contracted services, um, a, a small portion of them has been shifted over to the SU. But be, with the school-based clinician. But I think the hundred and seventy-eight thousand, what really, there were some. There were some high-end students with, with, with some behavior uh interventions, BIs through HCRS and some other things that that's contracted services. Those students, uh, no longer have that need, so that money's there, and so what Carrie's looking at doing is shifting it within her own budget. So you're not going to get double whacked, but I, what I also think is in there is like. You've got the health assistant already in the budget at twenty-seven, right? But I think it's part of that hundred and seventy-eight also, because that hundred and seventy-eight is a carryover from last year. And I think that's where the, she got budgeted for this year.
Okay.
So, so I think there, there's, there's, you're gonna see a drop, as Carrie just said, I think she, she calculated around a thousand. Increase, I think that's where you're gonna see her overall school budget, it's gonna come down to almost a, a net. Zero, or close to it. And then at the middle school, like I said, we've got to go back and look at the paraprofessionals. The contracted services there, because. I, yeah, I think that some of that can be looked around, and then, um. There was an, an ask of looking at the, um, the, the music and choral program, the band and choral program.
Jim, you you probably can reduce the pre-K tuition. Because now we have more of those kids. In house, Carrie.
Yeah.
That is on A.
Expenditure.
On what, what is that credit?
July three oh nine, page ten. It's not going to be a huge savings, but.
Okay, and uh.
Yeah, because we'll. You can go, you can base it on. We already have the contra, you know, we're already paying for them, comparing.
Want to go down to Andre?
Well, I think you should look at what we're.
With actual, look at this year's actual. He he's saying that this year's actual can predict what next year's going to be, just. Because a lot of those kids where we've increased our offering, our spaces of preschool.
And and we pay it out, you know, in intervals there, I think. So I'll have to take a look, I'll see what what the first payment was.
Right, I know the first round of payments have been made.
Yep.
The budget would cover about forty children. In those programs, so it's a partnership program. So if if it's going to, looks like it's going to be less than we can.
Yep.
Laura, the other question we've been asked, you, do you have title of people at your school? One, you have one title at yours, thank you. Yeah, there's. There's. Three specialized at yours, for do.
Right.
At Central, one at Saxon's River and five at the middle school. Those those are in the ESU budget. Anything else that we can do on this tonight? Thank you for all the information and all the. Stuff that we're working on and yes, we just need to continue working and sort of give them out. Adjustments and stuff. Do we have a personnel matter, do we have an update on that handy?
I I can't, yeah, I knew we have, we will need an executive.
We need to go and do executive session.
And if you would invite Megan to.
And invite Megan. And I would do just a two state negotiations at the same time, so. Um, I see the month and should be um to move into executive session for a personnel matter. And initially a boostings contract in.
Carrie, you have to send me in.
Um, and invite.
Oh, yes.
Um, middle school administration and superintendent. I've currently um set up um. The tour of the three schools for tomorrow.
Say no action was.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was no action coming out of um executive session. And so we have currently set up for the tour of the Saxon Server, Central and Middle School for tomorrow. But there's some conflict now with board members being able to attend that. So what I was wondering was, um, and looking at the schedules today, um, and Nicole just called me back. Um, we could possibly do uh December first, but that's for Andy to attend, it's before two fifteen. So if we did December first, what I would recommend is we do possibly. Uh, Saxon's River at twelve and Central at one fifteen. And then do the middle school on December fourth as part of our meeting, the first part of our meeting. Or we can do them on December fifteenth and do all three. What is your preference, people?
I'd like to do the all three on fifteen.
On the fifteenth is your preference?
Four, on the fourth, I will be at a conference.
Fourth would work for you to towards at our, that's our regular meeting.
Yeah, no, I I I realize that.
So the fifteen is uh, we could do them all.
We could do all three, yes.
Okay.
Um. So does AM or PM?
I was thinking afternoon, but um I was thinking like the the times that we had scheduled on there, twelve fifteen, one thirty and two forty five. But they could be moved up if other board members want that. I was thinking because Caitlin has.
I'm sorry, say those times again.
Uh, twelve fifteen, one or thirty two, or or do twelve, uh, one fifteen and two thirty.
So the only pickup that I can see in there is, um, and you want to start at Saxon River?
I put Saxon's River so that the other two were together.
Yes.
And I put the middle school last, thinking the middle school might take longer.
So no, that that that's fine, let me, um, I'm just thinking of dismissal at the middle school. Um, and then lunch at the at Saxon's River, but let me just double check those.
Do you want it?
I don't know the time Saxon River has one.
I don't know.
So so let me, let's use that as a template, Jim. And and we're far enough out.
Yeah.
With December fifteenth, that that I think we can work on it, we can get a schedule on it.
But board member, do.
I think it's going to be tough for me pretty much anytime in the middle of the day, um, that's, we have a a break the next two weeks. So that's going to be like my last sprint to get things in for work, so I I'm not sure. Um, I also have a meeting from eleven to twelve that day, so. And I I think, but you don't have to, like, I I'm not sure there's ever going to be a time where I can say like, yes, definitely, I can quit those three hours.
Okay.
Um, so you can feel free to go ahead, or I can, if I'm able to make it for the second parts of it, I can maybe join at some of the schools and um. And maybe miss the first one, so we can do it that way if that's all right. I mean, if it's really important that I be there, then I can try and figure it out.
I I mean, I think as we, I I sent both of you, I forgot Bill that was 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 out of town. Um, I mean, we can set up something because if it's just two people, it's not a meeting, right? So it doesn't need to be worn and then we can get a couple of people around or an individual, like if you miss Saxon's River. I can schedule something, so at least she has eyes on and kind of hears it, so.
So were you doing start twelve or twelve fifteen?
Let me just check, the double check.
I just put it down for twelve.
If we did twelve, one fifteen and two thirty, that gives two thirty to three thirty and an extra half hour if we had to have. Because with three, this is a big building and to get them done by four is what I was thinking on a Friday.
Well, I think you want Rick Schuman there, so he's 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 the wild card here, I've got to make sure his schedule works on it, so.
And Nicole said she had checked with him and that that Friday, those those would work for him, so.
Right.
So, okay, so we'll we'll tentatively plan on December fifteen. Okay, next meeting for the regular board is December fourth at five thirty. And um some agenda items would be the ones left over from last time, that includes. Uh, which would include the update on Cherry Hill Green space maybe and the parking at CES to look at that contract. And the school by Stiefel Road possibly, um, we'll see whether those are ready to put on there when it gets closer. And also the um sixty six Saxon Street. Um, and we can do a quick thing on budget two. Um, the second one is usually our budget depending upon if if it's fairly late on the first one, we'll have time.
I I'd go light and concentrate more on the budget myself. We'll have the results of the. The next ESU budget committee meeting.
Right.
Yeah, and and we're planning December sixth as a possible ESU. Have a real zone.
Yeah, that's that, that's after hours.
No, the vote on the budget could be on the sixth, but the the last, hopefully the last budget meeting will be.
Probably eight. Yeah.
Yeah.
So. There's one for you too.
For you too.
Yep.
That's a good little look. Thanks to get them though.
Okay, and is there anything else, director's comments? Caitlin?
No, no, good, good.
That's on, we'll skip those tonight, just everybody, thank you for everything. And um, Lil' Jordan at seven thirty.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.